Calling to order the regular Oregon City Commission meeting of April 18th, 2012. If you would please all join me in the flagpole.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had to wait for all the commissioners.
(laughter)
The first thing we have is a thing that I enjoy very much, and that is to do the oath of offices for some of our police officers. And I'll have Chief Conrad join me up there and make some introductions if you will.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for being here, and it's my pleasure tonight to introduce two new police officers who are going to be serving our community. And one of the nice things about being a police chief is seeing young people come into the profession and realizing that we're in very, very capable hands. Over the last several years, we've made a point of hiring lateral officers, which are experienced officers from other departments. We've been very, very successful with that. But this time, we decided to take a chance and go out and hire some people who are relatively new to the profession, and tonight, we have Kevin Carlson and Joe Begano. Now, Kevin has been a cadet at Gresham for a long, long time, and we have several Gresham officers here to kind of witness a swearing-in, which I really think speaks to the quality of person we're hiring there, to have some veteran officers from another agency drive all this way to witness a swearing-in. It shows that he's very well thought of over there, and we're lucky to have him. We also have Joe Begano here, and Joe is really new to the profession. I know his brother is with Oregon State Police, is that right? So it runs in the family, I think he's in the audience, too. Thanks for coming. And it was kind of funny, we were getting changed in the locker room today, it's just me and these guys, and I heard some fumbling around the corner, and I asked, "What are these guys doing over there?" And I looked around there, and Kevin was helping Joe get dressed.[139.44][139.44](laughter) And I wondered, "What the heck is going on?", and Kevin told me it's the first time Joe had put on a police uniform, so. But Kevin started last Friday, Joe started this Monday, they're going through some orientation this week, and then they go off to the academy on next Monday, and they'll be there for four months, coming back in, I think, August 18th is their graduation, so, please welcome them.
Congratulations.[165.37][165.37](applause)
I get the honor of giving yours, and I'll -- they put this in boldface because they know I don't speak very well. But I'll go ahead and state the oath, and if you would repeat after me, then. Okay, I --
Aye.
-- say your name.
Kevin.
Do so, I swear that I uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
Will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department rules and regulations.
And the department rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties as police officer.
While faithfully performing my duties as a police officer.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
Okay. Well, thank you, and congratulations.[225.62][225.62](applause) And so, if you'll sit down a moment, and then we can get people in the cameras there, and I get a good shot of them. You want me to be in, too?
Yeah, fine.[250.12][250.12](laughter)
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.[258.37][258.37](applause)
Go for it.
Mike, all we keep seeing is you adding more officers and none leaving. You're going to need a new police station someday.[271.02][271.02](laughter)
You think?
I wish that was the -- yes, we do need a police partner.
Yes, there you go.
These two officers are replacing people who retired.
Oh.
So that's why we're not replacing the former --
Oh, so that we can put off the police station?
I'm sorry?
We can put off the police station?
Oh, no.
Okay.[287.83][287.83](laughter)
Talk about that all night, if you like.
That's right.
Well, the young officers should experience kind of the hardships that former officers have for a while.
I really appreciate it.
I'm going to invite up Kara Lewis from the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. I think she has an announcement, in fact, I know she has an announcement tonight. Yes, please. Now, we have to get it on tape, so use the mic.
Well, that was really cool.
That was very cool.
That was very amazing. So I'm happy to be here tonight. My name is Kara Lewis. I'm with the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, and now that the room is emptied, I would like to just announce an upcoming event that we have. We have a watershed trolley tour, and I have a handout I brought today for all of you. We're registering folks for this upcoming workshop. It's going to be a fun event on Oregon City's trolley. So we'll be touring the area and discussing our natural resources and our watershed. So I'd like to invite all of you and anyone that might be interested to attend. It is a public event, and registration is through Clackamas Community College and also through our Watershed Council Coordinator, Rita Baker.
You might want to indicate the water, the streams that are involved.
Oh, of course. The entire watershed, but also including Holcomb Creek, Abernathy Creek, Newell Creek, as well as Potter Creek and Beaver Creek. I also would like to remind everyone of an upcoming Earth Day event, Saturday, the 21st. I'm sure you're all aware of the Oregon City Cleanup, basically beginning at Clackamas Park, and also including some other sites throughout the area. So it should be a fun event, and we look forward to a lot of volunteers serving their community this weekend, and hopefully we'll have some sunshine and less rain. Thank you for your time, and that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Great.
And with that, we'll go into our opportunity for citizen comments for any topics that are not on the agenda. This is a period of time, if you want to speak on something, up to three minutes. Invite you up to the front. I don't have any cards listed at this time.
Yes. There's two on there.
I don't see any on the floor.
Well, here they are. I do, too. Yes, Kevin Carlson and Joseph Begano, would you please both come up, please?
What? Wait. No.
It's this guy right there.
Oh, excuse me. I knew that. Your first, David?
My name's Dave Perdough, Oregon City. I'd just like to briefly make a suggestion on item number 9A. I know that the manager supports Goal Five that's posted over here, Citizen Involvement, and so I'd like to request the possibility for citizens to comment. And so, in order for that to happen, it would need to be pulled from the consent agenda, and if you had an interest in, you know, involving citizens in that process, it might be a good thing to do.
You mean, speak to something he's wanting to speak to?
Actually, you can talk -- you can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
What is it you want pulled from the agenda? You didn't state that.
From the consent agenda, 9A.
Okay.
Cool.
It's up to the commission. They haven't moved a motion to pull. Well, we'll do that after your presentations, okay? Go ahead.
That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah.
As it happens, my name's Kevin Hunt, I live in Oregon City. As it happens, I wish to comment on that same item, and also request that that not be on the consent agenda. I think this is just another kind of one of those situations where it's not so much that there's any impropriety with it being on the consent agenda, but it gives an appearance that there's a lack of transparency, and a lot of people that I communicate with on a regular basis have expressed some concern to me, and since they know that I tend to be a junkie who comes to these meetings a lot, they ask me to raise it, and I agree with them about it. And I know, because they're -- because if this had been listed as something that was not on the consent agenda, it's likely maybe that some of these people might have come in to comment. It would make sense, I think, if you decided to pull it, maybe if you continued that item to the next meeting. I don't know if that's conceivable or not.
We can make a decision if we want to. I hear a motion to pull the 9A.
So moved.
Second?
I'm second, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
We better do a vote count, I guess.
We've got to do this thing.
We better do a roll call.
It's not a regular item, so.
Right, we just need to --
We're just taking a poll.
There's polling, yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had one other quick item I wanted to discuss, and that was, I just wanted to state, and this is on behalf of myself and also on behalf of Mr. Michael Berman. This has to do with the kind of ongoing saga with regard to Main Street, Oregon City, and that 3D simulation that was done of the block down at the end of South End of Main Street, and so on and so forth, and subsequently, a request for the bylaws of Main Street, Oregon City, and that went through quite a few machinations, and it's my understanding that finally, the Deputy District Attorney of Clackamas County ordered those bylaws to be released, and they have finally been transmitted by Mr. Purdy to Mr. Berman. But Mr. Berman indicates that at least the first page, you can't make out very well because his name was scrawled across it. He's kind of upset about it, but I just wanted to report that --
Well, he is here.
Oh, good. Glad he's here. Good to see you. Thanks. Anyway, I wanted to mention that those had been produced, but it required a communication from the Deputy District Attorney, apparently.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm still waiting for my copy.
All right. Then, we're going to go in to the adoption of the agenda. We made a decision already in terms of pulling item 9A, and any other comments?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Well, we'll go right directly into general business, 8A, Adoption of Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law, Planning File AP 1101. Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening commissioners. So what we brought forward before you tonight are the findings of fact concerning the Erickson Appeal. As you may recall, the commission directed staff to modify the director's decision and grant certain aspects of the appeal brought forward by the appellant. The findings of fact have been included as part of the commission report. We are recommending that you do adopt and approve those findings of fact. I'll quickly summarize that what the modifications include is that for the three tax lots in question, 201, 1300, and 1400, outdoor storage of construction equipment and rock and building materials would be permitted as a legal non-conforming use, and that concerning the processing of those materials, that would be allowed, found to be legal non-conforming on tax lots 13 and 1400, and that processing of rock and building materials would be allowed during construction period, and the appellant identified the construction period as May 1st through October 31st annually. We worked with Mr. Convisman, myself, worked with the appellant's representatives and their attorney to come up with the findings of fact, and we are all in agreement, and I believe that there is a representative from the appellant if he would so desire to hear from them, but once again, we are recommending approval of these findings of fact.
Are there any issues that exist that somebody wants to speak to? Okay. Very good. So, this will require a vote, will it not? The vote is not in a form of, apparently, some form of an order, is what do we call it? It's just an adoption of findings? How do we phrase it?
Yeah, it's, what is it? You've got an appeal, and so you're -- sorry, microphone's off. You've got an appeal in front of you, so adopting an order, overturning a portion of the planning director's decision, and adopting findings of fact. And the recommendation, staff recommends the city commission adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law for planning file appeal 11-01, Appeal of Not Conforming Determination, LN 11-05, which modifies the Community Development Director's decision and grants the appeal in part.
So if somebody wants to say, so it's right in there under the recommended action?
Move to approve.
But we don't have a button.
I did mine.
I don't have a button.
You can do a second.
I can't second, there's no second button.
I don't know why.
Hold on now. I'll second.[891.12][891.12](laughter)
We have a new system that we're working on.
However, in any case, I think we have to verbally make the motion and second it, so that might be why it's not on the screen.
Who was the second? I'm sorry?
Me, Kathy.
Okay, we can do a regular vote, Mayor, if you wish.
We'll do a regular vote. Call the roll if you want to, but I'll go ahead and play with this, too.
You have to be on the floor.
No, I have to be on the floor.
Oh, no, it's a little different.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly? Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. I'm glad that issue is resolved. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to 8B, Heritage Tree Nomination for the Ainsworth House, 19130 Lock Whitcombe Drive, and again, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, once again, evening commission. For both the item for the Ainsworth House and the Heritage Tree Nomination for the Clyde Mount House at 916 Center Street, we are requesting that you take public testimony from anyone who has come tonight to speak on this matter, and then continue the, both the 19130 Lock Whitcombe and the 916 Center Street Heritage Tree nominations to the May 2nd City Commission hearing.
Great.
Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none? I have a motion. We're approving it, or?
Well, I'm requesting that we continue this to May 2nd.
We're just continuing.
Or four more comments, or what's the reason?
The reason was that the Heritage Tree Code actually has a specific requirement on who needs to be notified, and while the city commission, or I'm sorry, the Citizen Involvement Committee, and thereby the Neighborhood Association that these applications are in, were notified of the agenda, we would just feel more comfortable sending them a specific letter that says a heritage tree is being nominated in your neighborhood.
And then they can comment on the next meeting.
And I presume there's, I presume this is coming, the request is coming from the property owner, is that right?
The, these, both of these requests are private property owner requests, yes, they are.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and continue it? I don't know if we need a motion to do that. Yeah, I guess we do.
Move to continue Ainsworth Heritage Tree nomination for the May 5th?
Second.
Second meeting?
Second.
Oh.
Yes, that's all right. That's all right. It's a different second.
I even pushed my button.
Do I have a button?
We're not going to go there. There's a problem.
Yeah, but in any case, I think on the motions and the seconds, we definitely have a, well, of course, on the vote, too, but we have to have it verbal. And having that the case, then, it's moved and seconded for continuing the tree nomination for the Ainsworth House. The vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. We have a second Heritage Tree nomination for the Clyde Mount House, 916 Center Street, the same.
Same request, please.
Yeah. Is it, is there, since it's private property owner, is there any ever need to notify people within X number of feet?
This is not a land use decision.
Right.
So it's in a different section of our codes of the land use, noticing requirements do not apply, so no, we haven't.
Okay, very good. I have a motion to continue.
Is there any comment?
Is there any comment? No, nobody here, anyway. Yeah, is there any comment?
Move to approve.
No.
I shouldn't have made my --
Please continue.
Sorry, sorry.
Move to continue the nomination for Clyde Mount House Heritage Tree to May 2nd.
May 2nd, then.
2nd, wait. I hear a second from Commissioner Polly. Okay. Move a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Now, with that, we'll go on to general business, Oregon City Emergency Operations Plan, and Lisa Nunes, you're getting close to some of your last formal presentations here to our commission?
This is my last one.
This is your last one?
So, I'm ready.
We're partying.
Mayor, commissioners, as you recall, on the 13th of March, I had presented the Emergency Operations Plan that was developed by Ecology Environmental Incorporated, and tonight, I'm hoping that everybody has had a chance to review it, and we can get the plan promulgated, so we can have it in effect and give it out to our Emergency Operations Center and to the Fire Department. And do you have any questions after reviewing the plan?
Well, I can tell you, I was not here that night. I was ill, but I did go through, watched the video, the little CD that you sent, I went through and looked at all those pages, and I thought it was great. Did a good job.
And since you weren't here, Commissioner Mum, one thing that I advise the other commissioners and the mayor on the 13th was, this plan is based on one, this plan and Happy Valley's plan and Camby's plan, everybody that's involved in the emergency management in the metro area, not including Portland, they're all similar, so that if I went to Milwaukee, I could open up their book and know exactly how it works.
That's good.
There's several things in here that are specific to Oregon City, but all the plans are very similar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. And the action here is to accept the plan, is that correct?
Correct. So I could, if I could find my little thing here, move to approve, to accept, is that what I do?
If you look at the commission report, approve and promulgate the City, Oregon City, Emergency Operations Plan prepared by Ecology Environment that was presented to the commission work session for review on March 13th, 2012.
Thank you, Bill. I couldn't find it on this, so I --
So?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oh.
Oh, we do, okay. Mr. Hunt? It's not a green, so I don't know if that was his previous citizen comment. It's not in a green form.
It's my fault, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Hunt has signed up to.
He has signed up?
Yes.
Okay. Particularly, if there are questions that involve you, why don't you just remove, remain there, and he can take the other seat.
I just want to say, personally, it's really a loss to the city to see Ms. Nunes go. I've worked with her, of course, as a citizen, a crime victim, a defense lawyer, and in many other capacities, and I'm really going to be sorry to see her go. I, because I only have three minutes, I wrote my comments down, and I know you haven't had time to read them, but I did have them distributed, and first of all, I think this is the best city of Oregon City Emergency Operations Plan I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of them, and I've helped write a bunch of them. It's really, really outstanding job. But I'll start with just one little, one item here. It appears that one part of the plan conflicts with Oregon City Municipal Code 2.52030. That section provides that the mayor shall declare states of emergencies except when unavailable, in which case the commission president's responsible for declaring emergencies, but that the city manager may do so if the nature of the emergency is such that immediate response is necessary, and it's not reasonable to expect that the mayor will declare an emergency prior to the time when response is needed. The plan, on the other hand, basically provides the city manager is the default person to declare states of emergency. That would conflict with the code unless either that provision or the code were amended. It would seem to me preferable to amend the Emergency Operations Plan to conform to the Municipal Code provision, which seems to cover all contingencies. And this may just be something I overlooked, but I didn't see mention of community emergency response teams, the CERT, in here. Maybe it's in here, but I didn't see it. Oregon City once had the leading CERT teams in the Pacific Northwest. The Department of Homeland Security recently stated that CERT is essential and that ARAS RACEs communications in support of CERT are essential. CERT needs to be re-energized within the city and made a part of the plan. With regard to communications, on page 16, Table 1-5 lists ARAS RACEs in the Private Nonprofit Organizations section as a communications unit resource. ARAS and RACEs are defined in the glossary, but only in terms of what their acronyms stand for, and there's no further explanation. The glossary defines communications unit on page E8, but fails to mention ARAS RACEs. There's no explanation in the document of how ARAS and RACEs fit in the communications unit or how they're activated, yet, although I think that's probably in the Communications Unit Leaders Checklist that wasn't right before you. You have to go to page C4, Figure C1, to learn from the EOC Operations Center Position Checklist that the communication unit leader is under the Service Branch Director. Sometimes they're under operations, in this plan, they're under logistics. It's just a little cumbersome to find out whose span of control the communications unit falls under. This is really important because the first, the first emergency that you will face in a disaster is always a communications emergency, and without re-establishing interoperable communications, which is what the mission of the ARAS RACEs is to help with, you can't start responding to the emergency. Now, on page 32, or 3-21, Table 31, ESF2 Communications, it lists as a response partner for emergency support functions, the organization CARES, but nowhere in the document does it tell you what CARES is. CARES is the ARAS RACEs unit for Oregon City. So someone who had to implement this plan, who had to be thrown into the position of incident commander all of a sudden, who maybe wasn't who you intended to be, the incident commander, wouldn't know this, wouldn't know that CARES is the ARAS RACEs unit. There's no correlation, again, there's not tied together anywhere. The upshot of these omissions is that on the fly, a person assuming incident command functions of logistics span of control won't know that CARES is the group to be activated, and will not know that ARAS RACEs refers to CARES, et cetera. And I think, I think that's actually all I had. But, and these aren't nitpicking things, and they're not complaints, and they're not, I'm not putting down anything, because this is, again, I want to say this is the best plan I've ever seen Oregon City have, and really great job on it. These are some things that I would suggest should be fixed, though, and at least the conflict with city code that I perceive, I think, should be fixed, but I'd be happy to help work with anybody who wanted to. Oh, there is one other item. It says that any changes or updates to the plan on page 6-1 should be redirected to Lieutenant Lisa Nunes, and unfortunately, is a, are lost. She's not going to be around. I don't think she's going to want to be getting those requests.[1597.12][1597.12](laughter)
I think we'll forward those to your personal email. I'm sure you'll answer them promptly.
I do have the ability to edit the plan. I have, there's a log on, on the computer that I can get to. That will be given to the next lieutenant and Chris Wadsworth, so they'll have log-ons to edit the plan.
Great.
Because things will change.
Absolutely.
Phone numbers, contact people, and then there's going to be tweaks. That's just the way it is.
Yep.
We, you know, I have to go through this, and if something doesn't work the first time we enter, open the Emergency Operations Center, we will tweak.
Yep.
Let me ask, where we have a conflict between our code and the plan, I presume the code supersedes?
The code would supersede, and that might be one of the first tweaks.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe direct adoption of it would.
Mr. Hunt, I appreciate your, I appreciate your work on this, I really do. We could, I guess we could, we could, are the tweaks that substantive that they couldn't be dealt with, and that this couldn't be brought back forward to us at a subsequent meeting?
Well, it's like Lisa said, I mean, there's going to be tweaks, and they will be able to fix those.
Well, yeah, yeah, I understand that.
I think, you know, it's really up to you, would you prefer to see this plan again with the four or five things that Mr. Hunt suggested, or you can adopt the plan and direct staff to make the changes as suggested by Mr. Hunt?
We'll do that.
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion to that effect.
I thought we already had a motion on the floor, didn't we?
We did, but we, yes, we had a motion on the floor, but we also had a citizen comment that I failed to pick up on.
But don't we have to, like, add an amendment?
We can redo the motion, as long as everybody agrees to the change.
That's right, and the second.
As long as the person making the motion and the seconder agrees to friendly amendments to, to the effect of making those changes.
So can we amend?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So, I think I was the first, was I?
Yes.
So I would move to, or add...
Amend your motion to make the corrections suggested by Mr. Hunt in his memorandum submitted to the, to the commission this evening.
So moved.
Second?
And second, for the second time.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, okay. You proved two.
This, this in no way precludes us operating under this plan, and so, just to be clear on that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Tom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I miss your smiling face.
Smiling even bigger now.
I know.
Okay, we're reintroducing a first reading, reading of Oregon's 12-100 for amending chapter 9.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to carrying or discharging of weapons, we had that before us, and I believe we made some changes on it, but also based on Mr. Hunt's recommendations.
Correct.
I think it looks great.
Any, any comments, I, all right, Mr. Hunt is back up here, I think.
Yes.
Here's more paper, we'll cut the trees.
Kavanaugh, Oregon City, the amendments that are proposed by staff, I totally concur with, although they went farther than even I thought they would, and I was mainly concerned about bows and arrows, I know, I know the chief, and I could understand the concern about, you know, if you allow kids to carry BB guns and air guns around, you can't do anything about it until they misuse them, and I get that, so if you don't want to include the BB gun and air gun exemptions, fine with me, I was mainly concerned about bows and arrows, I'm fine with the way they've proposed it here, too, I just thought I'd mention that, because this went actually even farther than I expected. There is one thing I think is an unintentional error, on page 2, on G number 2, it now would read, "The member guest or patron of any licensed organization or business who, for the purpose of shooting practice, discharges a firearm or bow and arrow, et cetera," says that the, that the prohibition in subsections C and F would not apply to that, actually, now that this is being changed, that's no longer correct, the prohibition against using a bow and arrow in a manner likely to endanger persons, animals, or property certainly would still apply, and so, in number 2, the proper thing to do would be after discharges, a firearm would just simply be to delete the words "or bow and arrow," it's just, I think, a phrase that was overlooked there, if you leave that in there, you're exempting, you're exempting the mis, the improper use of a bow and arrow as long as it's done on an established target range, so if you're on established target range, you can be as dangerous and reckless as you want, I don't think you wanted to say that.
Mr. Attorney?
It, it makes some sense, however, most of the time when you have someone being dangerous and endangering persons, animals, or properties on a, on a firing range, there can be other consequences beside the concern about whether or not they're violating city ordinances, and so, you know, I don't think there's a problem with, with making that, that tweak to, to deal with it, and, you know, make it clear that in fact, it's still against city ordinances to violate, to handle firearms and bows and arrows, dangerous, in a manner that's going to endanger folks, so, making that would, would be, making that amendment would be fine.
You can do it in the reading itself.
Yes.
To keep us from doing the first reading, he would go ahead and read into it the change.
Right, that would just be, again, just eliminating the words "or bow and arrow" from the second line of G2, and other than that, just for your own edification, I supplied some statistics, and you find there that archery is fourth from the bottom as far as being safe, the only thing safer are bowling, badminton, and table tennis, the most dangerous is football, cheerleading is right in the middle. And then, number reported injuries on table 2, we start with bicycling, we go through exercise routines, and all the way down through basketball, and then we have injury rates per thousand participants in youth sports, and archery is, I mean, it's just insignificant. The other thing I learned was that the average number of injuries every year bow hunting from actually discharging the weapon is one nationwide, and, and it's, it's less than one on an annual basis for non, the non-hunters, most of the injuries are from people falling out of their tree stands, I did learn, however, that in comparison to injuries from bows and arrows, 43,000 Americans a year, this is a nice little bit of trivia, I know you all want to know, it's too much information, but 43,000 people a year are injured while engaging in what we're called, quote unquote, bizarre lovemaking positions, so you compare that to the bow and arrow.
We won't get into definition.
Do you sleep at night?
Actually, no. I just enjoy your day.
I'm sure, I'm sure, Mr. Hunt, I'm sure that he included BB guns and other things into the ordinance, because we didn't want to make it appear it was specifically directed to your ham radio status, so.
No, okay.
Anyway, with that, does somebody want to make it...
I move to...
We got another person?
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
I move to amend the chapter 9.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to carrying or discharging weapons.
I think what we want to do is do a first reading with the amendment.
Oh.
And he will include the wording.
Okay.
So he'll do the reading with the amendment in it, so you want to move for a first reading with the amendment?
I move.
Okay.
Second.
Here's a second, I got a, okay, first reading with the changes.
Ordinance number 12-1004, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending chapter 9.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to carrying or discharge of weapons, and the ordinance would be as posted, with the exception that section 9.24.020 subsection G2 would read as follows, "The member guest or patron of any licensed organization or business who, for the purpose of shooting practice, discharges a firearm upon an established target range or shooting gallery of that organization or business," thus deleting the term bow and arrow.
With that, if there's no discussion, we can go for the roll call.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
They'll be coming back to us again for a second reading. The personal services agreement for consulting services, wait, excuse me, no, that's right, services for 2012 paving projects, and somebody substituting for Nancy Kershaw, John Burrell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Neely, commissioners, I'm sitting in for Nancy on this item, as she's at the Public Works Conference in Eugene, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but this is the, the report, the staff recommended that the commission authorize city manager to execute the personal services agreement with Murray, Smith, and Associates Incorporated, to provide design and construction administration for the 2012, and actually 2013 paving projects. I'm not, this is first time I've done this, I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to do.
Well, with that, and we do have, we have the document on screen here, so we can pull it up.
And he, he also had the personal services agreement and the standard conditions that were to be submitted for the record tonight, it was just an omission from the agenda packet last week, and you have, you were, they were emailed to you today, as well as they were on the, on your monitors. The scope of work was included, and that, that's what you needed for the review and the agreement itself.
Oh, okay.
It's on, it's on your monitors.
Yeah.
Got it.
Any questions?
That's okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the personal services agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
No further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Thank you.
With that, we're going to discuss slide 9A, out of the poll from the consent agenda, city manager performance based on compensation increase, let me make a comment here, this is a evaluation that this city commission has made, and there's some people that seem to want to discuss it, but we actually met in executive session and discussed with Jim Leveller, our, our evaluation and so forth, and it's been polled, I don't know whether any of us want to go into a discussion, we've had two requests coming before us here, and, and I, are you agreeing again, Mr. Kevin?
I agree.
Well, but that's, have you asked to testify?
I'm sure.
This is the one that was...
My earlier request was that if it's pulled from the agenda, that it be continued to another meeting, so that citizens would know that they could come and comment.
Oh, I wouldn't want to hold it over.
This is a, I mean, the commission makes the evaluation, I don't know what the comments would be, I mean, if complaints were coming to us, we probably...
We would have already heard them.
We would have already heard them, I presume.
Oh, I do, I do agree with that.
Well, if you, I mean, we can, if I, if I got a vote to continue it, that's fine.
Okay, I, what I think, I'm taking their motion to be, is that they want this to show us a transparent move, so that we can be more transparent in our hearing, so that's what I'm taking it to be. Well, that's fine, but also, if you guys have comments tonight, please come forward and make them. But we, we have to notice the public that they can make comments. Right, but I'd like to hear what they have to say tonight, too.
Well, they may not have any basis to say anything, I think it's a main, a basic, a basis of form, I guess, is that, because I don't have any, but, so, we can, we can, we can request to come forward as a regular item, if that's the desire of the commission, so if you want to put a motion to that effect, go ahead.
Okay, I, I motion that we carry this forward to the next meeting.
As, as a non-consent item?
Yes, as an unconsent item.
Here, a second. Hearing none, the motion fails. With that, we'll go into, into the, if you want, do you want to move to approve our performance based compensation, go ahead and do so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Nay.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes forward.
And we can go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda, which consists only now of the minutes of April 4th through 2012 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Here, a second. We're approving the minutes of April 4th, 2012.
Oh, second.
I'll give you a minute.
No, that's fine.
Okay. With that, any...
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
And we're going to communications from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first tonight, I want to comment on the section of the municipal code on SDC exemptions, it's section 13.20.030 subsection E, and I think, Mayor, you had asked me to comment on this, so I'm going to read verbatim what that one exemption line says, and I quote, it says, "Publicly owned recreational facilities used and maintained for public use, including restrooms, locker rooms, storage buildings, parking lots, and the like, shall not be subject to SDCs imposed pursuant to this chapter." So what that says essentially is that if, I think your question to me was, is a library of recreation, and it's not...
No, that was a question that, yeah, we were putting...
It's not among the examples, it's academic question, I suppose, but I think even if you wanted to make that interpretation, it needs some methodology to justify.
Well, I guess I would say those examples are probably given because people would not normally think of a restroom as a recreational facility.
Right. I would say you're right.
So, I don't, I don't think it was defining recreational facilities to be that, I think it was making sure that those particular items would be included in the, in the definition.
I think you can see a library as a storage facility.
Well, that's very good. Any other questions on that?
Well, we, I think this is worth some discussion at one point, however, here's a situation that we have in the case of the library in particular, and I've been thinking about this some, the intent of this was actually to really reduce the cost of building a library by exempting it from, by permitting it to be regarded as a recreational facility, at this point, I don't think we've requested our attorney to do any investigations on this, and it'll be up to the commission if you wanted to, and our, our library director wasn't that comfortable with having, having it regarded in that way as an exemption, and I thought about that a little bit. The only, you know, from the library standpoint, when we build houses and so forth, we also have SDCs, the library, of course, serves a great, greater area than the city of Oregon City, so the impact of people coming out of the city comes into the question of our transportation systems in particular, and, and there's, there will probably be no other way to capture that effect of people using the library, other than having the library SDCs charged, I think the methodology for SDCs for a library would include the trips from, coming out from other places as well, and so, even though I thought it was a good idea, I'm having some second thoughts, if we wanted to, we could have our city attorney to explore whether the library could be considered a recreational facility for this purpose, but I think we would only want to do that if we wanted to really consider it exempt, and I did not see any staff member, including our library director, indicating they would want that exemption, even though it would decrease the cost of the library. Mayor, I might say one thing about it, you know, I look at these SDCs somewhat analytically, and as a matter of public policy, they're there because of the impacts that these facilities generate, and if the community supports the construction of this library, our objective is to attract large numbers of people to the facility.
Right.
Which is exactly why we have SDCs, is so we can manage the impacts of attracting large numbers of people to the facility, so it, it seems a little counterintuitive to me, of course, you could say that you build a park for the same reasons, to attract people, but unless there's a reason to think the need is mitigated, or the need's going to go away, based on a particular site that we pick, or that becomes available, now that could be a different analysis, but I don't think we're going to know that until we get further along in the process of developing a library, so if that comes up, and it looks like it's viable, certainly staff would make that suggestion to you, that you take up the issue, but right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to recommend that you do that.
Most of us, I, I'm the one that suggests it, I, I don't see a reason to pursue it further, if anybody does, it would now be time to discuss it.
I don't.
No.
All right. I have two, a couple other things on my report, Arbor Day, Arbor Day Tree Planting Event is going to be at Chapin Park on Friday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m., and I believe we have some finance director candidate activities that day, so I will personally not be able to be there, I don't believe, but I'm going to try to be there, but it's kind of in the middle of a hectic day with the candidates, but if I can be there, I'm going to be, but I certainly know that the mayor's going to be there, Mr. Archer's going to be there, and about 175 elementary kids we're expecting.
130, we lost a couple classes.
I'll help you find them.
Go find them, Scott.
I'll be looking around.
It's Scott and I, 130 might be it.
How many, how many, how many trees, how many trees are we planting?
We are planting, at Chapin Park that day, we're planting 17 trees.
How many people does it take to plant?
Well, we're going to have a lot of participation, but also, I'll mention, not just at Chapin Park, we're doing the, the planting with the school kids there, but we're also planting some other trees at other sites that same day, we're planting 22 new trees at Hillendale Park, and 14 new trees at Clackamas Park on Arbor Day, on Friday, the 27th.
Very good.
Yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Next, I want to ask the city attorney to address a little bit of the issue we're having, trying to dissolve or reform the IGA with West Lynn on Willamette Falls Media Center, there's been a little bit of lag in communication from their side to our attorney, their attorney to ours, it's taken a while for him to get back to us, but anyway, Bill's going to give you a short update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, we've talked before about the Clackamas Cable Access Board in Willamette Falls Media Center, it's a creation of an intergovernmental agreement between West Lynn and Oregon City, and one time Gladstone, Gladstone's withdrawn, there's only two left, and West Lynn has now announced its intention to withdraw, and the, the way the IGA was set up didn't, didn't really anticipate the eventual dissolution of it, we've been talking with Willamette Falls Media Center, who has completed their inventory and, and accounting of what's, what's going on, we've been trying to get in touch with West Lynn, and we just received a, a letter earlier this week that essentially was between West Lynn to the Willamette Falls Media Center that says that they would like to be compensated for all the equipment that they're, they, that exists in the inventory, that they disagree with the accounting that the Willamette Falls Media Center has done, but without explaining what that disagreement is, and essentially saying, Willamette Falls Media Center, you're not somebody we have to talk to, it's Oregon City and us, and, and so, it, it wasn't the response we might have hoped for, but we'll continue to work with West Lynn in an attempt to...
Good talk, Edna.
Yeah, an attempt to get it, make it come to the best resolution we can.
This is, this is rather unfortunate, because in our discussions, the city manager, myself, and our assistant, the city manager, have been, were involved with discussions with counterparts, and the indication there from West Lynn is a, whatever they...
And the indication there from West Lynn is they, whatever they would do, they would do it in such a fashion to try to guarantee the continued existence of Willamette Falls Media. And so I'm rather disappointed in that stance.
Yeah. We were a little bit surprised, and it took several weeks now for us to hear back. In fact, I finally sent the city manager over there a note and asked him, because Bill's having a hard time getting them to respond. And I think they did respond shortly after-
It was interesting that the response was to Willamette Falls Media with a copy to us. And so we still haven't actually gotten a response on-
And the letter we saw today, the one I read, said they disagreed with the accounting, but didn't say in what way.
Right.
And so, you know, when there's a dissolution like this, you do need to have an accounting of the assets and liabilities. And we'll eventually get that from them, and-
It's just going to be an ugly divorce.
Well, maybe. I'm not giving up hope, though, that if it looks like it's going to sort of get that way, one of the things I may do, Mayor, with your agreement, is to try to set up another meeting between you, the mayor of West Lynn-
I think you should.
-and the city manager and I, and see if we can't. I think it's just really important for, you know, that agreement has been in place for many years. West Lynn has been a good partner with Oregon City in many other ways. And I think that it's hard to lead with integrity and dignity and make something like this appear to be pleasant when, for some people, it isn't. But I think that's when it's particularly meaningful for us to do that. So we're going to, I'm not going to give up challenging them to try to meet us and leave this organization, that organization, the media center, in such a fashion that they have a likelihood of success. Because I think fending their own way out there in the nonprofit world is going to be a big challenge anyway.
Yeah.
And it's going to be difficult under the best circumstances. And we'd like to send them off under the best circumstances. We're probably going to have a contract with them. It may be even a little bit more generous than we would typically have in the beginning, because we want them to get off to a good start. And so I'm just hope, I'm going to remain optimistic that we'll be able to-
We'll do what we can to make it a successful venture, but we wanted to let you know what new developments were.
Thank you.
And unless the department heads have anything, that's my report for tonight.
Well, I've got a couple of things. I believe our Commissioner Roth is going to be attending a presentation at the Convention Center on Urban Development. I think that's the vocation is, one of the speakers there is Michael Freeman. He's an internationally known urban designer, and he's actually going to be speaking, I think it's the same evening, but he's going to be speaking at the Metro Chamber Council from 5:00 to 7:00. His topic is making strip commercial corridors and transforming business parks, beginning to design an urban innovation for a knowledgeable economy. I'm not going to be able to go to that, but it's going to be open, there's no charge for it. And the city manager indicated that he's going along with Mr. Conklin to attend this. But I think if anybody else has the opportunity to go to this presentation from 5:00 to 7:00 on Thursday, it'd be-
That's tomorrow?
Yeah, that's tomorrow.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mayor, I was remiss, and I was going to report one last thing, and that was that we had a meeting here this afternoon at City Hall among representatives from Main Street Oregon City, Terry Powers and Lloyd Purdy, as well as Commissioners Roth and Polly, along with Catherine Comer and her assistant from Clackamas County, and Mr. Mike Berman regarding the recent incident and the misunderstandings around the 3D modeling project that Main Street did with the county. And I would probably leave it to the commissioners, or maybe our Main Street Representative Commissioner, to report on what the context of the meeting was and what we achieved. But I think it was a good discussion to get it out on the table, and I think-
Absolutely.
Yeah. So just wanted you to know that we had done that.
Okay. The other thing I was reporting on, I'm a representative, actually Lisa Nunez, was also to a group called Oregon City Together, which is looking at dealing with issues of youth in terms of alcohol and substance abuse. And they put together, first of all, they put together a funding for a grant, but from their data analysis, they had some interesting statistics about Oregon City. Eighth graders report higher alcohol use than the county average of eighth graders. Gardner rates higher than Ogden Middle School for marijuana and alcohol use. The perception of harm is declining for marijuana use in Oregon City. And we have a higher rate of medical marijuana patients in Oregon City than the surrounding areas. And I thought those were interesting points that they discerned from data they've been able to obtain. And of course, it ties into an ordinance that we recently passed. It was broader than medical marijuana sale here, but that anything that is prohibited by either the U.S. Constitution or Oregon Constitution, we would not have any business licenses that were directed to things that violated those constitutional or state and national restrictions. That's all I want to do. Either Carol or Kathy want to comment on the meeting you had with Lloyd?
Yes. We had a meeting today with the Main Street manager Lloyd, county business owner Kathy, myself. I felt we got a lot of things, you know, on the table. Talked about the whole miscommunication in the process. I definitely think that communication needs to be addressed. And so I personally, as the Main Street Representative for the Commission, I need to go down and meet the business owners face to face, so that they have a person that they can connect with and express any concerns. And then I can take those to Lloyd's. So hopefully, we can open up those communication areas and address some things.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other reports from the commission?
I do.
Do you want to go, or you want me to?
Markey Smith has actually pushed his button.
I have behind my name.
Push it again.
Okay.
No, it's after mine.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and let you know what's happening at C4. No, go ahead, Markey.
I'll let you know what's happening before.
C4.
Okay, so just wanted to comment or make a quick report about the Tourism Council meeting that we had on April 20, or excuse me, April 9th. April 24th hasn't come yet. So on April 9th, we had the first of two meetings, two open meetings to the public to create a discussion and a dialogue about what we would use the $20,000 coming from the county community partnership program to focus attention on tourism in Oregon City. So we had a good discussion. There was, oh, I don't know, 20 people there. It was a good core group of people, representatives from most, I think, representatives from all the sites in Oregon City. Main Street, Lloyd was there, Chamber was there, representatives from the hotel were there. And so that was the first opening meeting to discuss some ideas of what we could possibly, how we could possibly tackle some things in Oregon City with some of that money. And some of the topics that came up at that meeting were filling in some of the gaps that we have in the directional signage throughout the city. We have, over the last couple of years, have drastically, I think, improved the directional signage for our tourist locations and even some of our amenities downtown, parking stuff. So we're doing a better job with that, but there are still, we think there's still gaps in between some of those areas connecting people from even, seems like once you find a directional sign, you can get to everywhere you want to go. But finding the directional signs are not really that easy, because they're not at the entryways to the city, they're not at the, they're not at the, you know, if you get off the Amtrak, at the Amtrak station, there's nothing telling you which way to go from there to find things. So I think that might be a possibility. That was one topic we talked about. The Amtrak station was a focus of a lot of discussions, mainly because we've had multiple meetings where the Amtrak station has come up, both from urban renewal, tourism meetings, city commission meetings. And how to start making that more of a focal point and a destination, and how do we make sure that the people, once they get off the train, are actually going to other places in the city. So everything from the trolley schedule came up with that, how to get people to and from. The information that people see when they get off the train there at the Amtrak station is there updated information to lead them to various attractions, that kind of thing. One other topic that came up, I already talked to Nancy a little bit about this, is we're seeing on the county level and even the city level, a lot of discussions and focus on bicycle tourism. And we're going to see, I think, a heavy focus on that in Oregon City in the next coming months. But the question came up, is there, is there a way of having bicycle racks on the trolleys? And is that something doable? We talked about possibly doing something similar to what the Teletales is in the county, but using QR codes at various sites that have information. So if you have a signage or something that, at a location, you can get information more about the other things going on. Better integration of all that same information around the city. Brochures always is the one that comes up. We update brochures constantly, but then they have a short shelf life. And how do we make sure that those are being utilized? The Arch Bridge Celebration came up in ways that, you know, is there ability to tie in to that with some of these projects? And in the future, the OCTA event coming up, too. So this was just a brainstorming session to see what are some of the things in Oregon City that we know that we want to deal with? And can we possibly use this $20,000 to start tackling some of these? So there's a second meeting, and that's on the 24th of April. It's the same night as our urban renewal budget meeting, but our urban renewal budget meeting starts at 5:00, is it?
5:30.
On the 24th, 5:30. And the tourism meeting starts at 7:00 at the Pioneer Center. So Tuesday, April 24th, 7:00 to 8:30. It's open to anyone interested in discussing what we should do with that $20,000 for tourism. So I welcome everyone to come to that.
Thank you.
If we're not done with the urban renewal budget.
We'll be done.
We'll be done.
We'll be done.
We'll be done.
If not, I'm going to run back and forth.
Love the optimism.
Apparently, you haven't had as much experience with urban renewal as I have.
The newbie, but I heard.
Oh, I'm newbie newbie.
On the other hand, you may be exactly what it takes to get the meeting done with an hour and a half.
Sometimes we started at, you know, one and not gotten none.
See how it goes, huh?
Before, Eddie, I noticed that Carol's come up, and I maybe cut her off a little short, so I'm going to come back to you.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Fine.
Sorry, Eddie. Sorry.
My apologies.
Yes, I wasn't done. I-
Well, and I'm sorry, too.
I love it. I also went to the Kanema Neighborhood Association, and it was great to attend that and meet some neighbors. So I came up with an idea of drawing up a commissioner's schedule for neighborhood associations. I plan on going to quite a few, just to meet and greet and get to know people. And so I'll email you guys in forward, just so I can pencil in the ones I'm going to and when they are, so we can-
That's wonderful, yeah.
Because I think it's important to be present and accessible and bridge, or a bridge between the citizens and the city and help promote unity, and just so that people know who we are, and we can, you know, listen to issues and-
Thank you. Wonderful.
Now I'm done.
So I'm very sorry about that. With that, Eddie Mum.
Okay, so as you know, I am our rep on the C4 Committee, and there hasn't been a lot happening, but now we have something new coming out, and I have to get kind of your thoughts on it. So at C4, we have all of the cities that come together. And what we're looking at is a regional fee of some kind, either a vehicle registration fee or a pavement management fee like we have, that will go through, that will be raised, be put to a vote of the people. If it's approved, monies will be raised, and it'll go into this pot. And then from this pot, the cities will get part of it, the county will get part of it. It's in the baby, baby steps of this, okay? So there's not been a lot of things nailed down, there's no, we're going to do it this way, we're going to do it that way. This is baby, baby steps. My question is, and I did talk to Nancy Crushhour, just to get her input, because we already have a pavement maintenance fee, would our citizens be wanting us to look at a countywide fee? Though it could be a vehicle registration fee for a dollar, or it could be a pavement fee, you know? So my question is, what are your guys' thoughts before we get much further down the road with C4? Is that something that you think our citizens are going to be interested in? Okay? So I just want you to know, I talked with Nancy at great length about this. And at this meeting at C4, they said, there was a representative from Merkley's office there who said, federal monies are going to start drying up for transportation projects, okay? So that was another layer on this. And he thought it was great that we were looking at this, okay? This is a baby kind of step. We haven't even started to crawl yet on this. So when Nancy and I talked, we both kind of agreed that our citizens are already paying, and I'm thinking that our citizens are not going to want to pay for countywide, regional kind of transportation thing. So Nancy thought it could go to, if we could make it go to a, not current roads, but like new construction kind of stuff. And I don't even know if we could make it do that, okay? So just, I always get in, when we start talking with the county and the cities, I get very nervous. And I want to make sure that you guys are all knowing about this. So-
You've generated some discussion. Carol, Polly?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring this out, because it hasn't, we haven't, we haven't gone any further with it than just talking about it. I'm not sure that our city would be interested, but-
Want to go first, David, or you want me to go first?
Is Carol not first?
She, that was, hit the danger of withdrawal.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was before, and we-
Yeah, that was her trying to get me to pay attention to her.
I don't remember if it was Commissioner Mum or someone from C4, but I did see the proposals. And did the rest of the commissioners see those?
You know, I don't-
Or four or five?
Yeah.
Different proposals. One was a VRF, one was the pavement management fee, another one was, there were like three or four different, one was a tax. Well, they just called it that, which the others, I guess you could call those that, too. I definitely had some opinions about a couple of them that I think were problematic, right, right from the get-go.
Right, from the very beginning.
But rather than make that statement to you now, what I've done is I've asked Nancy and our team to get together and evaluate the options, so we can report to you, just sort of what our general reaction is to it. Because I figured you might want to know if we see any problems that you would want to be aware of. We're just going to try to spot issues, not to give you a guidance or a recommendation, because I think a lot of this is, you know, it's, as city officials, we understand, for example, that our citizens pay general property taxes to the county that funds sheriff patrols, that unless we're out on a county road, we're not utilizing that sheriff patrol. We have our own police department, we pay for that. And so there's already some arguable subsidy coming heavily from citizens in Oregon City. And so that's why, and then, as you mentioned, competing with some of your initiatives, like the water rate rollback and other things.
Yes.
I do think that the county could benefit from more transportation dollars, as could all of the cities. We always have more needs than we have resources.
I was going to say, yes.
But we'll evaluate those and get those to you, and then- But we'll evaluate those and get those to you, and then if you want to have a work session or something to discuss them in greater detail, that's probably...
Well, and this is just baby, I mean, we're just barely starting into these conversations. So I kind of wanted to get the pulse of the commission to see if we should even consider it. And I'm happy to forward that presentation out. Are you talking about the one that Cam sent?
Yeah, they sent out like four, there were four or five options that they were kicking around, and I can't remember if I got that from you or where.
I can, I'm happy to ship them out to you guys.
That'd be great. I'm going to ask the question, who put this forward initially?
Well, this came from the whole C4 Committee after the retreat that we went to up on the mountain.
That's right.
So that's what's driving this. So if it is something that C4 has, wants to pursue, we could maybe opt out as a city, I don't know. But anyways, baby steps. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it.
I mean, I think it's the same concerns that our city manager has, that we probably got 50% of our urbanized area is not within cities. And we actually, through our county taxes that we pay, we are subsidizing some of that already. We do not get the same, I am sure, well, we probably ought to do the study, but I'm going to suggest that we do not get as, per residents, as much in county services as residents in the unincorporated urban areas in terms of our tax dollars. And so, the county, I mean, I think the county would prefer all of those areas become cities, either annexed to cities or develop cities in their own right. I don't think they want to, I think their preference would not be providing urban services, if that were possible. But it would seem to me that, first of all, the individual cities themselves could impose a utility fee if we want to. I don't believe when we put forward our pavement management utility fee, the citizens weren't necessarily in favor of that. We did so based on the needs put forward. Now, I think the attitudes has changed, because they've seen advancing on pavement activities, we've been able to do things that we wouldn't have been able to do for some years, but each individual city could do that if they wanted to, and I think maybe the county can't.
Well, I think the county can do part of this. They can do...
Their own utility fee?
They would have a billing issue that's administrative, but they could do a vehicle registration fee.
Which would be on all of us.
You know, I mean, they could do other things, but this is to look at a regional kind of solution for all of our roads.
Yeah, I just...
I don't know. Just throwing it out, just letting you know. I can forward you guys the email. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of what's being talked about up there.
Yeah, we can have a discussion probably in a study session or something.
We will, well, before we even get to that, why don't we get, we'll get back to you, Commissioner Mom, a short report on what our reactions are to those issues that we spot, pro and con?
Yeah.
And I think they actually had some pros and cons attached to them.
They did, yeah.
They were more regional in their look, so we'll be looking at it more Oregon City specific, and we'll give that to you and the rest of the commission and then take it from there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Very good. Any other comments? We do, my understanding, we do have an executive session that's on the agenda, however, my understanding that it's been canceled post, if so, it's going to occur at a different time. So with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting and go our various ways.